I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Alec.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mrs. Seigwin.
Here.
Everybody's here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the March 15, 2023 Alaria Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is board member and Vice President Mike Gebhardt. To his right is board member Elaine Seigwin. I am Greg Guehlech. To my left is board member Annie Karstoffen. To her left is board member Lynn Hauser. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slosh. And all the way down on the end is our brand-new treasurer, Colleen Ahold. Okay, we have a very, very special recognition today. Madam Superintendent, would you like to get the ball rolling?
I would, and just to start, you know, I'm gonna bring just a tad bit of history in. Mr. Kokai and I, I vividly remember our conversation we had about seven years ago, roughly seven years ago, but the group that started the robotics program are seniors this year.
Oh, okay.
I think they were in seventh grade back in the day. And not only did we have middle school state champions this year, we also had high school state champions, multiple winning awards at the state over the last seven years. But we wanted to bring them in to recognize the eight teams that are going to Worlds.
Oh, wow.
I don't think, and Mike West, where are you? Mike, is there any other school district in Ohio that has eight teams going?
One other one that's close, but they don't have the age range we do.
All right, so I would consider us the number-one team in the state of Ohio. And I'm just gonna say it, right? So I'm gonna introduce Mike West, who's been with us from the beginning and on this journey, and he's going to give a little presentation. So Mike?
Mike, come on over. Is the, hopefully the microphone's on so we can get this all on for the record.
There you go. That's how we do it. I don't like to talk a whole lot, so I'm gonna let the kids talk. It's not about me. I just facilitate. I give them time. I give them space. I give them stuff. So we're lucky enough to where we have five coaches with our program. We have students from fifth grade all the way through 12th grade. We are one of the largest robotics programs in the state of Ohio. I would venture to say we're one of the most successful from fifth grade all the way through. We are one of the very few programs that has teams at all the different levels that have qualified for World Championships. So, time, space, and stuff, they do some really cool things. So I'm gonna call up a couple of coaches here. They're going to introduce each of the program that they kind of oversee. Then we're gonna let some of the kids talk about what they do, because nobody really understands what robotics really is, so I'd like to let them shine a little bit. So first is Janine Stave and Jen Smith. They are primarily responsible for our IQ teams, which are fifth and sixth grade.
Is that Han? Is it Han?
Hello?
It's Han.
You could pick it up.
Okay, Janine Stave, this is my second-year coaching for the IQ team. And we have our first world qualifier, Team 44035F Temptation.
Stand up, come on.
So we can't see him with the banner on. But on the left is Rex McCourt. He's in sixth grade. And then we have Trent Casada, who's in fifth, and then Debbie Kozek, who is also in fifth grade. They were one of eight teams that, out of the 10 that we have that qualified for this state tournament, they were, there was three of those eight that went to the finals, and then they came in third place, which was a world qualifier. So that's how they, I found they made it.
Way to go, Alex.
All right, so I'm going to introduce the next person. It's our middle school team. We only had 11 kids in our middle school program this year, which is really, really low. Previous years, we're still kind of on a rebound from all the COVID stuff that kind of happened. So we're in the middle of building that program. Like I said, we have about 100 kids in the whole program. If only 11 of them were seventh and eighth grade, I think we're rebounding okay. So 4211P was our middle school team who actually won the state championship tournament.
Stand up.
This is Larissa Peacock. She did have two teammates with her, Mara Thomas and Sarah Ramon, who were the two teammates. They are an all-girls team, which is a really big deal, because most of them situated things like this are mostly predominantly male. So the fact that we have more females in our program than males is a real big cap on our feather that we really like to show off.
All right.
Which is really cool.
Nice.
So we have a very large high school program as well. So I'm gonna call Angie Burgess and Amy Yates up here. They're gonna introduce you to these guys.
I'm gonna stand over here, if that's okay. I can talk loud. So I'm going to list everybody that made it. I'll be here. I've got Alex Buckway, Connor McPherson, Ella Haas, Gabby Latacky, Colin Coons, Josiah Jimenez, Alex Jimenez, Orion Price, Anthony Wright, Nick Majors, Devon Miles, and Logan Baker. They are all on our ROTC teams, which will be competing in Dallas as well. Also competing in Dallas, Andrew Peacock, Anthony Schwitz, Riley Scholko, Ethan Boyes, Camden Burgess, Noah Hearn, Isaac Quast, Bella Truxell, Mia Yates, Chloe Kep, Vicky Jones, Jamie Reynolds, Emily Harding, Kyra Body, Michael Taylor, Xavier Wong, Kirsten Young, and Abby Young.
So like I said before, we have a ton of people in the program, and we like to show off what they do. So what I'm going to do is let our X team come up here. The way the robotics works is it's similar to like tracker wrestling. We really have individual robots with a group of people attached to them, and then they go play round robin tournaments to determine rankings. Then based on those rankings, they have finals, and they have to kind of, March 16, battle it out to get to the end. So I'm gonna bring up 11124X. This is the butterfly effect. Majority of these girls, yes, all girls, have been here since seventh grade. So this is a group of freshmen and seniors, because I thoroughly believe you should train your replacement, so they've got some freshmen with them. And they are a two-time state champion. They won the Excellence Award this year. So the banner of the cabinet's only up, Cam. That is the Excellence Award. The Excellence Award is the overall best robot in robotics per event. They've won that two years in a row, which is a combination of a design notebook, an interview, a skills challenge, and tournament challenge. They have to meet all these criteria, and there's a giant rubric for it. They have to fit in all these categories, so you literally have to show that you are the most excellent robot based on these categories. So they are gonna show you how the robot works. They're gonna pass their notebooks around a little bit, because they are a labor of love. And when you see them, you understand what I mean. And they're gonna talk to you a little bit about how their days work.
All right, wow.
So initially, we start off our day at a tournament where we go, and then they have like these opening ceremonies almost, where we decide like, okay, this is what's gonna happen today. You're gonna have this many matches, and this is how the rules are gonna be. And every year is a different game, but the game stays consistent throughout the year. And then, once we get our schedule printed for the day, you get a random assignment. So you're with another robot, and then you're against two more robots. So we get a random assignment as to who we're partnered with and who we're against. So it's kind of luck of the draw, but you also have to build a robot that you know is gonna function well by itself, so that if you do get partnered with somebody or against a team that's really good, you can also hold your own. So it's really important for all of us to work together, using team communication that we figured out throughout the years, figuring out how we can all talk to different teams, especially going to Worlds. This is our fourth time going, third time going to Worlds. We got one in COVID. It's okay. Third time going. We have had a bunch of different language barriers that we've had to overcome. I will never forget our very first match. We were with a team from China, and they could speak no English at all. So we sat there using pictures and Google Translate, and it was an amazing experience for us. So we go, we do, we play our matches. Typically, there's four to six matches in a day, which is a lot. But then we also have our team interview, so we all stand kind of office, and we all talk to judges who are judging us, and that's how we earn that award.
This year's game, it is basically disc golf, if you know what disc golf is. You shoot discs into almost a hoop-like look chain, and you have rollers, which are exactly the sound room, that have two different colors on it, red and blue, which is what the teams are.
Yeah, that's how you decide which team is on what side.
So you intake it, and then you shoot them into the hoop. And then, with that, you have a bunch of brainstorming in our notebooks that we do.
Yeah.
Yep. So at the beginning of the year, we all watch the game reveal video. And then as a team, we sit down and we're like, hey, what do we think? Like, what are we gonna do? How to score points. Teams in other countries start earlier than us. And we watch their videos of them. They explain the game, figure out how we, we're gonna approach.
And based on all of that, we all have different roles on our team, so not all of us are doing the exact same thing. Like, not all of us are building. So we have builders, we have drivers, we have programmers who, they all, we all, we have notebookers, sorry. We have scouters. We have every role you can think of. We all work together to make this robot the best that it needs, that we can hopefully go in and win a tournament.
And even though we're all separate teams, we're still all one team. We all help each other. Like, our team is X. We have an R team and an P team. We all help in all the stuff.
The middle players, all the IQ teams. Sometimes we dedicate our actions to the younger kids. It's amazing.
I mean, I can try. I actually know people who are younger than me that use the ECU, and it's not that hard.
That book, making that one.
So she is a sophomore. She's a senior, and she is actually the one that measured me in going through the engineering design process in her notebooks. And yes, with hers, it,
This is your writing, then. It's pretty good, too.
Yes, thank you.
So the thing that they're not telling you is, that's not the only notebook they have. But Jamie, last year, I think, had 12 notebooks, something like that.
That was not last year.
No, it was two years ago.
How many do you have right now?
Four.
So she has four.
So you start out with nothing?
Start with nothing. The robot starts with nothing. It's just parts in a pile. And they start with brainstorming. They all create decision matrices. They create every subsystem, from wheels to lift systems to drive trains. Some of them have six motor drivetrains. Some have four. They limit you on the number of motors you can have. The robot has to fit within an 18-by-18-by-18 square. So they have a big list of constraints they have to meet. So it's really a real-world situation.
And how long does that take to do that?
So the person that does the notebooks generally is project manager on the team. So each person reports to that person, but mainly one person records. They give them all their notes. I don't, how many hours and days do you think you have your notebook in?
That's a great question.
So if you have weeks for the entries, how long does it take to do a week for entries?
Greg, it makes our taxes look easy.
Seriously.
Like, this is like three years of work here?
No, that's from maybe August?
August 15-ish to current.
They work real hard.
I have to say this, because they won't brag about it, but the coaches and the students, you will see them there from 2 o'clock till 7 or 8 o'clock almost every night.
He's stealing the ideas.
Yes.
The biggest deal is, everything is student-led. My job and the other coaches on our staff, our job's to facilitate. I don't touch robots. I have never looked at one of their notebooks. It's not my job. I ask you a nice question. What's funny is like, when we go to Worlds, they do a remote interview first. The first time I ever see any of them interview is when I have to sit on the camera, because I have to be there to be present as an adult. I have no idea what they're like. So everything they've done, they've cultivated together. And like I said, I believe in training and replacement. These guys have all taught everybody, each younger than them, how to do things. So we're literally going from 12th grade to 11th, to 10th to 9th, all the way through 5th, where they're all teaching each other how to show up, how to be responsible, how to, two big things that I'm really big on, leave a pit cleaner once you found it, and always hold the door open for other people. So if you can do those two things, you know you're not the only person on the planet. And as soon as you do that, things start to go really well in robotics. We used to go into tournaments, and it was kind of like, eh, Alaria's here. Now we show up and they go, oh my gosh, Alaria's here. Because when we show up, we're successful. And it's not about winning trophies. Like, we do all those little tiny things, right? Everything builds, and they're successful. They're gonna be great human beings that are gonna change the world. Seven-grade son ends every essay with, as you can see. As you can see, we're very proud of it.
I never saw anybody write like that. That's just amazing.
We had an engineer from MIT that came to see our program, because Cecilia Rinder from Nordson told her to, and she said she's never seen anything like it. So that's saying quite a bit.
Wow, that's unbelievable. Thank you very much for sharing that. And congratulations on all your successes, and you definitely make Alaria School is very proud. So thank you very much. Okay.
Don't forget your books.
Yeah. All right, now we have to move on to board business. Visitor comments. We do have two visitors signed up for five minutes today. Our first visitor is Eileen Sherman. Eileen Sherman, come on up.
Very impressive.
So we will just ask you for the record to state your address, and then it's all your five minutes.
Okay, I am Eileen Sherman. I have a quite non-trivial degree. I'm the one who put all those little foodstuffs on your desk, for those of you who didn't figure it out yet. I figure it's the end of the day, and you're probably hungry, so consider that
No, thank you.
something to help your positive decision along. Those post-it notes there, the numbers, what they are, oh, address, sorry.
Can you, excuse me?
1080.
1080, North Pasadena. Okay, thank you.
I don't know. Okay.
We're good?
Yes, 1080, little old lady from North Pasadena.
Thank you.
And if you wanna go for more, we can go. Come on, Eileen Dexys Midnight Runner, so we'll just stop there. So the two numbers on the top of the post-it are Lorraine County Auditor parcel numbers. I'm told that you got those from the city in late 2021 when you played land swapping. I want them, or more specifically, I want them for the Metro Parks, because we're not the only ones that live there. It's only a loan from, you know, them and their descendants and their descendants. So those two parcels are basically just wooded lands and a creek, ravine. Where I live is my deceased grandmother's house, and it is adjacent to one of those parcels. After the new northwood was built, I got thinking when I saw the deceased four-footed friends from certain people not going slow enough, that, you know, I gotta do what I can to help them. So here I am. So I would like to have you give those two parcels to the Lorraine County Metro Parks, or worst case, have me buy them and give them to the Metro Parks. I already spoke with the other fellow, who's, my name's on the left. I'm left-handed. He's on the right. He's the head of the Metro Parks, and he says, heck yeah, I'll take them if they'll give them. Sure, no problem.
You're talking about Tim?
Uh, Jim.
Jim?
Jim, yes, Jim. That's his phone number.
Where are these parcels at?
So, okay, who knows Spring Valley? Who knows the new northwood?
Yeah, that's it.
Not the old one, but the new one.
Okay.
All those trees, that's those. I want them.
Okay.
Or I want them for the Metro Parks. I walked along there as a child. There's many species that live there. I mean, I see wild-tailed deer almost every day, coons, possums, yes, gongs, they're species, too, birds, chipmunks, squirrels, you name it. So it's a little piece of land left from human destruction, and I'd like to keep it that way. As well as, while I'm at it, any other piles of trees that you might have that I don't know about, because I don't live next to them like this one. So again, any parcel of trees, hopefully give to Metro Parks, or I buy them and give them to Metro Parks. That's what I'm hoping. I can give you some good chocolate-flavored protein to facilitate accomplishing. And please recycle, and respect the mother of us all, not just homeless applicants. That's pretty much about it. Any questions? Hit me.
Well, we'll definitely look into this, and we appreciate you coming forward and letting us know about your interest in this. And to be honest with you, I'm not exactly 100% sure where they are. I do remember us doing the swap, but I don't remember exactly where.
If you know where the new northwood is, the, there's a,
To the north of that?
Sort of, yeah.
Isn't there a ravine down through there?
This is exactly that. That's exactly what I'm talking about. If you go north up Abbey, the new northwood's here, there's a little chunk of trees that deadens Abbey. If you walk all the way around to those trees, it's cut into two parcels, which is all, that's it. It's all that. It's a ravine. It's fresh water for my four-footed friends, me and Dick Goddard, who lost his soul. So that's all two parcels that technically now you have, and I called the city forth and back. There's a whole long phone conversation behind this before I figured out where. So it's those two. And other little bits are owned by, like, the rear of other property owners, like personal property owners, but the majority of it you have. And as I said, the gym palace said, heck, yeah, that's a nice chunk of land, and we'll be glad to take it, because I don't know what they'll do with it. And I believe Brian said that there were no plans for its development either, and I want it to stay that way, as do all my four-footed friends.
Okay.
So, yep.
Sounds good. I know exactly what you're talking about, now where it's at.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yep, I think we're good. Super. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, we have one more speaker that has signed up for today, and that is, it looks like Ross, Rose, Rob? Rob. Okay, Rob, come on down, and please state your address for the record.
I live in the district. My name is Rob Slattery, 6600, Gusser Stride, Brooklyn, Ohio.
Okay.
I just wanted to stop. I want to commend you guys on your decision to hire Colleen Ahold. I worked with her. I'm on Brooklyn School Board, and you stole her from us? But it was a good move on your part. You're gonna be very happy with her. I just wanted to stop in her first meeting, so you guys did very well.
Oh, thank you very much, Rob. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. That was nice.
All right. Boy, there's some pressure to live up to. All right, that's good to hear, Rob. Thank you very much for sharing that with us.
No pressure.
Okay, moving along on the agenda to the business. It looks like the minutes for the February 28, 2023 meeting were posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt, and a second, did I hear a second over here, by board member Karstoffen. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Treasurer, your first action items.
Yes, I have the monthly financial report for the month of February, and I also have the approval of the purchase orders to comply with the district's purchasing procedures. And that's all that I have.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Seigwin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Hauser. Comments and questions? I do have a quick question on the purchase orders. It appears that one of them's over cost. I'm not so sure if you know much about that, since you're new. Do you have any background on that you can share, or would you need to look into it and forward it to us?
I would look into it to give you a more detail, but I believe it has to do with special ed and the students going to the certain place. I will say, though, that I'm putting in internal control, so we wouldn't be going over the purchase order budget.
Okay.
But, yeah, there are three of them, and then one was over budget.
Yeah, so for the record, two are because it was over the period of length, but one was over price, so if you can get us more information on that, I appreciate it. Any more comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen? Oh, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Any other reports for us today, Madam Treasurer?
I believe we have two expulsion hearings. Do we have to appoint board members for the expulsion hearings?
Okay, I think that's in the board later, so I think we're good on that. Correct? Yeah, I believe that's,
It's treasurer other, yeah, H.
Oh, it is treasurer other?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. Okay, all right. So big news, big news there. Okay, we do have, it's set up for the first meeting. For the April 5 meeting, we will have Mike Gebhardt and Lynn Hauser as our primary reps, and then all three other members will be the backups on that. And then at the April 19 meeting, we will have Annie Karstoffen and Elaine Seigwin, and the three remaining will be the backups on that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, was that Ms. Karstoffen that?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and then on the OFCC, are you going to give that, or would you like me to?
I could, to approval of the lowest bidder for the construction on the roof replacement?
Yeah, and that is basically, I think that just took a little bit, a little while. Is Brian actually here still? Brian, any comments on that?
No, it came in, just a small one, I guess. It came in under the estimate, I believe. And they're looking to get started ASAP, to get it completed prior to the start of the school year.
Perfect. Okay, and then for reference, too, that is the same information that Mr. Rigda updated us on. So, okay, do I have a motion to approve the new roof?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Gebhardt. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, you have some action items for us this evening.
I certainly do. Thank you. First of all, to approve the adoption of the school calendar. This is the second of the two, so after tonight, we will be able to get it out to everybody. Next, to approve the stipend of the following certified staff member. The next one is, as you know, we did the other two last time. This is Northwoods, Washington, DC trip, and that concludes my action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Seigwin. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, looks like we have some personnel action items here this evening, huh?
We do, and if you don't mind,
I've heard a lot about this.
Yeah.
Lot of good news here.
I'm gonna go ahead and go through them, and then we'll stop to take a minute, if that's okay.
Sure.
First of all, to approve the appointment of the following administrative staff member. Then to approve the appointment of the following certified staff, as detailed below. To approve the stipend for up to 40 hours for Patty Steidler. I can't believe we're talking graduation already. Next, to approve the cancellation of the following athletic supplemental contract. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts, as detailed below. To approve the following district, non-district game worker. That was kind of a name from the past, for those of you that know Lynn. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Hausers. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you want to say a few words here?
I absolutely do. I had the pleasure last night of going over to Alaria High School and introducing their next high school principal. And I do have to tell you that I have received a lot of very positive feedback today and last night. I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled, I, I had the pleasure of helping, um, appoint her on, at an elementary principal's job a few years back, but I'd like to introduce Jody Johnson as the next Alaria High School principal.
Thank you, thank you. Um, good evening. Um, so I am unbelievably excited, um, but before I give my thank yous, I would like to just talk a little bit about me. Um, I'm the daughter of Joseph and Linda Williams. Um, I was raised on Sixteenth Street, south side of Alaria. I'm the product of Franklin Elementary, now Hamilton Elementary, um, Eastern Heights Junior High School, and a product of Alaria High School as well. Um, my roots run deep. My parents graduated from Alaria High. All my siblings graduate, graduated from Alaria High. I have many nieces and nephews who graduated from Alaria High, um, and my roots continue to run deep as I graduate my son this coming spring. Um, I've been here for a while. Um, I'm grateful for my journey in this district and the people who have believed in me through every single transition. Um, some are who, some of who are here today, uh, my family are here, um, I have friends that are here, colleagues, both teaching colleagues and administrative colleagues, uh, former teachers such as Kathy Malletti, Doug Grayson, Matt Thomas, and the late Diane Quinn, uh, former coaches such as Carol Russo, Ray Polesky, Connie Resnick, Bill Byrd, and Kim Branham. Um, so, with that, um, at the end of the day, I love kids. I love kids. Um, and I'm gonna do whatever I can to make sure that all of them have an opportunity to experience the success and whatever success means for them. And, my leader, I thank you for the opportunity. Board members, I thank you for the opportunity, and, um, I'm willing and ready to serve once again in this district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you're gonna do a good job.
Yes. Awesome. Congratulations.
Jody, I just have one question. Does your son ever take those headphones off?
I was thinking the same thing. Are they the same pair from when we played baseball together?
They transitioned. These went from earbuds, the big ones, to the tiny little earbuds, and now back to that one.
And all he hears in there is Jody talking. It's all programming there, right? Isaiah?
All right, well, again, congratulations, Jody, we're very excited for this opportunity, and we really look forward to seeing what you're gonna do up at the high school, so congratulations. Okay, Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent report for us this evening?
I do, I do, um, again, just kudos to the one, all the staff that has put in so much hard work with those programs, you know? They teach all day, and then they stay after to do these extra things with our students, and it's just phenomenal. Would also like to make sure that everyone is aware, Special Olympics Craft Fair, is that what it's called? Craft Fair on Saturday, it's, it's a big to-do, they fill the high school, right? How many vendors this year?
Um, I'm not sure offhand, but we have full place, and we do Easter egg hunts for all the community kids, um, we stuffed over six thousand eggs. So we group them by age, so...
That's awesome.
Welcome to everybody.
Also, on Sunday, the nineteenth, we have Rick Smith coming courtesy of, I believe it's Eastern Heights Elementary. If you haven't see, if you've ever seen a magic show, this one is ten times better than that. He is absolutely phenomenal. So a great event to take the families out to. Um, I, you can contact Eastern Heights Elementary for any of that information. Also, I want to thank all the staff, um, both administrative and, um, teachers and classified staff for all the hard work for our, from PD Day on Friday. We had a lot of great training going on and, and really cool things, and, and, you know, you reflect on that, and you know that's all done for our students, so kudos to everyone that worked hard. I would also like to take, uh, a moment to just say, um, I don't know that, that she knew what she was getting into, but the last week and a half, Colleen has been a, a trooper. She is fit, fitting right in, and I couldn't say enough about her, but she's already a pioneer, as you can see, through and through.
Nice.
Um, we have her wearing the red and black, and, uh, you can't have her back, but, um, we, we...
Why don't you bring flowers?
Yeah, I, keep trying. But we love her, and, um, um, we're excited for the years to come, so...
Thank you.
And I know you wanted to say something about your team.
Yes, I, I just wanna thank everybody, I'm so excited to be here, thank the board, thank you, Anne has been amazing, the team has been amazing, my staff has been so welcoming, and, and the admin and the cabinet, and I want to thank you guys, too, for welcoming me as a pioneer.
All right. That is it.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board of Education, we do have some business on here, uh, the second reading, to approve the second reading, adoption of the following policy, which is the, uh, what is it, the notification of the meeting. So we did have the first last time, this is the second, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Seigwin, and a second by board member Gebhardt. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. And I believe we do not have any work in executive session today, so I will, uh, ask for a meeting to, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a, a motion by board member Gebhardt, and a second by board member Karstafen, and Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?